I'd like to welcome everybody out to our city council meeting this evening. It's June 2, 2020. It's our administrative session, it's a little after 6 o'clock. From the council attending on this Zoom meeting is Annette Judd, Gary Peterson, Kent Henderson, Jerry Chatterton, and Andy Dawson. And I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. Just a quick item on the agenda. We're gonna, I'm gonna switch. Items three and number one, I'm gonna put three. The garbage collection contract at Econo Waste is item number one. And then we'll, then we'll just push everything down from there. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay. So with that, we'll go right into the discussion regarding the amendments to the garbage collection contract. And I'll turn the time over to Kyle on that one.
All right, thank you. And so I'm sorry to bring this up again. After our last meeting, I spoke with Val Sanders at Econo Waste. And I think I saw that he's on the call too. So if you have any questions for him, we could let him speak. But they were doing some financial analysis and based on the numbers that they were coming up with. He said that it was, it's not going to be possible for them to extend the contract by three years like we had talked about at the last meeting. He said that they're, well, we forwarded you the email that he sent, and that's also in your packet. That he's just losing money. With, with the rate that we're paying and, and his, the different costs that have increased. And, and he detailed those facts in his email or in his letter that we emailed to. So I guess we're, we're just, we're bringing it back. I told him that that kind of changed things as far as the direction that I was given. And that we needed to bring it back to the council for further discussion. So he is asking still for the 30 cent increase. For the first can and. And, and no extension to the contract. So the mayor and I have talked about this and. And Mayor, I don't know if you want to add any of your thoughts to before opening it up, but. I don't know, I guess I'm just, I'm open to suggestions or comments and.
Well, we, we thought, I can't remember Kyle exactly because it's been a couple of weeks since we've talked about it, but we didn't, didn't we? So we have two years left, right?
Yeah.
Didn't we, didn't we decide that, that maybe going 15 and 15 might be? An option?
Yeah, we talked about that. We talked about also. That in two, in two years, for sure, we're going to be getting bids again on the contract. We know where we stand compared to what other cities are paying and, and likely where we'll end up in two years on a rebidding of, of the contract. So there, there's a.
Yeah, we talked about the stepping up, you know, that if we did have to increase it just a little bit now. And then maybe that gap isn't going to be as big.
Yeah.
A couple of years from now, that it's a little bit more palatable because we, I think. Based on the comparisons we have and some of the other things that we're kind of getting a feel for is that, you know, there'll be a, a pretty good increase next time we go out to bid.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it might not be, you know, the, the two, two thought processes are just let it ride, let the contract ride out with the, with the lower amount. That we're under contract for and then go out to bid and then potentially have a pretty large increase or, you know. Realize that, you know, we are getting a good, a good deal, even if we did raise it 15 cents or 30 cents. And, and have that buffer that increase in a couple of years a little bit more.
Yeah, the increase now might make it a little, a little easier to swallow. For residents to kind of increase that now, knowing that we're going to have a more significant increase in a couple of years.
I think from our last meeting, that, you know, that I think everybody identifies that they do provide us a good level, high level of service. We haven't had a lot of problems. I think everybody thinks we're getting a good, a good service for the money we're paying. And so if it was, if it was anything other, I mean, they've been a good partner, a good contractor for us. If there was, you know, the opposite of that happening, then I don't think we would consider it. Because they have been so good to work with the last few years, that's the only reason why I think we, we come back and, and maybe look at it. So I'll open it up to the council and if anybody has thoughts, just go ahead and unmute yourself and start talking.
And, and for your reference, the letter is on page 71 of your packets, if you have that in front of you.
Any thoughts from the council? Gary?
Yeah, I've got a couple of thoughts and.
Gary and then Kent.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Kent. So a couple of things, and I, I agree with you two. As I've thought about this, it's a little bit difficult because we do have a contract and. And normally, if, if we were on the other side of the contract, you know, then that's just tough, that's just the way it is kind of thing. But, you know, if somebody else is on the other side of the contract and. Now, what makes it a little bit more palatable for me is the long-term relationship. Meaning this isn't a contract for a one-time event. If that was the case, then you've got to just live up to your contract. This is a contract for a long term and it was entered into three years ago and things do change and have changed. And so I, I like the 15, 15 scenario. I think that allows us to acknowledge that things have changed, but yet to kind of share in the fact that this is a contract. And that there's an obligation there to stick the next two years out and then let's renegotiate. And we realize that things have changed enough, we'll probably have a higher fee. But anyway, that's my thoughts.
Okay, Kent?
I, I would be good with 15, 15 if, I don't know how, what Val, how he feels about it. But I would even be good with 30 cents. Just because we've, they've been our carrier for so many years. And I don't know if ever having any complaints against them, they've done an outstanding job. And I hate to see anybody losing money. Because of, you know, economic dynamics with things going up to the point that. They're not covering their costs. So. Or as it talked about in the, in the. Minutes, or not in the minutes, but in the notes that. Has anybody thought about renegotiating a five-year contract from this point? And it does, it does state in the contract, doesn't it, that, that the contract can be amended if both. Both parties are agreeable. That's all I had.
I think I'm okay with 30 cents myself.
Mayor, you're muted. Mayor, you're, you're muted.
That is a problem when I'm muted. I will, how do you feel about it? Jerry and Annette. Now we have kind of Kent and Andy maybe weighing in on maybe just doing the 30. And you want to go first and then Jerry, if you want to weigh in?
I would say I'm comfortable probably with it being that the 30 cent increase and it's staying there. Then we renegotiate if he's not open to having a new contract right now.
Okay, Jerry?
Here we go.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, and I'm okay with the 30 cents. I just wondered what Val had as far as, you know, we go 30 and then he comes back next year and says, oh, we did another audit. Is that a possibility or is, is 30 cents okay? And, and he'll finish out the contract with that.
You know, we, we can ask Val if you want. In my conversations with him, he was comfortable with 30 cents now for the rest of the contract. But we could ask him, he's, he's on, you want to, you want to let him answer that?
Yeah, Val, Casey, you want to unmute him and Val, do you want to chime in on that question?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Hey, I, when I talked to Kyle earlier, I have no problem doing it for the 30 cents for the next two years. When I renewed five years ago, it's been 12 years, so 17 years, I bet at $3.20. I'd like you guys to consider it'd be a lot better and. For both our interests to give me what I need now so that in two years from now, when we do, or I could ask for an extension. Then it would be feasible because I know you've been fair and, and up with me. If you go back 20 plus years, you're paying $2.65 a home. So you start doing the math in the last 25 years, boy, you've had very, very few to no increases. You did add green waste, you have had recycling, the green waste has gone from, my wife's here with me now, it went from like 70 ton to 130 tons. I mean, everything on my end, it just gotten heavy, 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 more, 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 and everything cost a lot more. I, I don't know how to even explain it. Everything's gone up and I'm having a hard time keeping up with the overall cost. This is the first time, I think, in 17 years I've asked for an increase. 12 years ago, I can't remember how long Kyle's been there, but I don't think I've ever asked Kyle for an increase. The whole time he's been there. And how long have you been there, Kyle?
I've been here for nine years.
Nine years. So the probability of me coming in and trying to twist arms or anything like that and ask for more is pretty unlikely. If you look at the 25-year history of what I've asked for.
Okay, thanks, Val. Appreciate you answering that question. So it looks like, looks like Kyle, I don't know how we move forward with amending that, but it sounds like the council's. In favor of just doing the 30 cents now and, and we'll renegotiate or go out to bid in two years.
Okay, we'll, we'll put an amendment together and, and bring that next meeting so that it can be effective July 1st.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the conversation on that one. Then we'll just go right now to the quarterly financial report and work our way down from there. And turn over the time over to Ryan. You're muted, Ryan.
There we go. Can you let me screen share, Casey or Kyle, whoever's the host? It will not let me.
Kyle, can you do that?
Looks like you're not going to be able to share, Ryan.
I mean, I can just talk about it if you guys have it in front of you.
No, we, we'll see, we'll, we'll see if we can.
Oh, now it's letting you.
Letting you now?
Yep. All right, so here is. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay, so here's our quarterly financial report. So this encompasses first quarter, well, third quarter of fiscal year 2020, which is January through March, first three months of, of 2020. So as we know, the coronavirus kind of hit mid to end March. So these numbers don't really reflect any, anything coronavirus related. And as a result, things are looking really good. As you can see from the report, with 75% of the fiscal year completed. All revenues are, are online or above where they should be in all of the funds. The only one, as we talk about often, is capital projects, which happens at the end of the year with our transfer. So, so those look really good. If you look at the general fund expenditures by department. You see that, that all the departments are well under the 75% as well. There, you know, we will have, with the coronavirus for the fourth quarter, we will have revenues, I think, taking a dip. A little bit, but we're also having expenditures not as high for some things like going to conferences or doing other things that, that we would have done otherwise. So I think for the, for the fiscal year, we're in good shape. I think our revenues will, will end well above and our expenditures will end well below what we budgeted. So. That's kind of it. There's also in the packet, if I can share this other screen, the actual report. You can kind of see this cash position by fund. You can see where we're at with, with each of the different funds there, as well as the total that the city is holding. And then the, the interest rate that has gone down in the month, in the month of March. So. Yeah, that's all I had unless you have questions and I can go into anything further if, if you have any questions.
Does the council have any questions, Ryan? In regards to our quarterly financial?
I don't have any questions. Just thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your work on this and on the budget.
Anybody else have anything they want to comment on?
Always.
Okay, Kent?
I just can tell you, it's always a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item and that's also yours, Ryan. So.
Okay.
Fiscal year 2021 tentative budget.
Give me one second and I'll pull that one up here. All right, so another discussion on the budget. Today in the general session, we have on there a public hearing and adoption of the tentative budget. Fiscal year 2021 tentative budget. So I'm just going to go over a few more things that, that we haven't gone over yet. As well as a summary of everything we have gone over and so please interrupt me at any point if you have questions. If you, and maybe I'll make this a little bit bigger. Sure one can see it. So we're going to have, we also have a special meeting, the, the CDRA meeting. To adopt the tentative budget for the CDRA. And the only change in that budget, the, the expenditures remain the same, it's 140,000 per year. To pay the, the debt obligation that we have. The revenues for this year came in at 157,000 for the tax increment. It's 8,000 more than last year's revenue. So the CDRA is doing well as long as property taxes don't go down in value. We should be good there as far as meeting our debt obligation. And then with the apartments coming in, that's going to increase that even more. So. So yeah, the only difference in the budget is that there's $4,000 less for the interest and $4,000 more for the actual debt expense in the CDRA budget. As we go down to the. General fund budget and really across funds, a compensation schedule. We, we talked about this a little bit. We have a 2% increase calculated into the budget. That's. The merit increase that we have each year. And so that is in there as well as I also included in the packet, the pay scale. So the pay scales remaining the same for, for all the positions that, that were in the budget from last year. The only difference to the pay scale is the three new positions that we added. So those are in there. And then as well as what, what the council passed earlier this year for the mayor and city council compensation. So that has all been updated in the pay scale and in the budget. And is a part of the 2021 budget. The fee schedule, the only fee that we have that, that will change in the fee schedule, the, and that's set to be adopted at the next council meeting. On June 16th is the, the fee for the. The waste that, that you guys just talked about, the 30 cent increase. So it would go, the first black can would go from $11.50 to $11.80 as part of the fee schedule. The next part that we want to talk about is the property tax rate. So we, the county said that they will give us, they will probably have the certified rate ready either June 9th or 10th, so next Tuesday or Wednesday. They did just send evaluations and the evaluations did go up about, by about 10%. But that's also including new homes. So we don't know exactly what the certified rate would go up as a percentage. As you know, since, since I've been here and even before my time, the city has always gone through the truth and taxation process. That's been part of kind of our policy. And when we first brought this up two meetings ago, there was some, some discussion on it. And I know the council expressed that they wanted to, to talk a little more about it. If you don't go through the process of truth and taxation, then. The budget will need to be approved at the next council meeting, June 16th. And that would just have the certified tax rate for the property tax. If you do go through the truth and taxation process, then. And we won't have that at the next meeting and it would be, the final budget would be adopted in August. So I don't, I don't know if you want to discuss that anymore today. If, if you would like, or we can just have both options available at the next meeting if you want to discuss it then. But that's, that's kind of where we're at.
It, it seems like we kind of got the feeling that the council wanted to go through the process for no other reason for. For budget numbers and seeing where our revenue is coming in for the next couple of months. Does that sound like the right direction? Did we understand correctly from, from the council?
Yeah, is everybody okay with that, that plan still moving forward? Just to buy us some more time, once we get some more sales tax money. Or sales tax information back on, on numbers that can help us have a little bit more accurate budget.
I'm good with it. I think that's a pretty wise decision at this point.
Yeah, if we can buy some time to see the trend, we'll know a lot between now and August. So it makes sense to do it, even if we're not contemplating an increase.
Yeah. Oh, it's, go ahead, Andy.
No, I say I'm good with that as well.
Okay. The other thing that we need to decide for the truth and taxation notice is at what rate are we? Are we saying we're going to increase to? Do you want that to be maintaining our rate? Assuming that that certified rate would drop? Or do you want it to be just the minimum that would be required? To go through the process?
I think knowing the rate would be really nice in order to make that decision.
Okay, and we, and we can make that decision next week. That's just something that.
Yeah.
Have to decide.
I think you're right. I mean, obviously you're right on. We have to determine that if we're going to do truth in taxation, then. Keeping in mind that there's got to be a rate that would be posted in everybody's property tax that we're proposing to do such and such. And we might not really be proposing to do that, but so we need to be a little bit careful on how we select. But I'd like to see us just wait till next meeting so that when we have that rate, we can do it.
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine.
Well, and we can have those, you know, options available and what it would look like on a average residence bill when, when it shows up. So you guys can make that decision next week. Or next meeting. All right.
Was it on the previous slide, Ryan, where it has the, the 2% increase for the employees?
Yeah.
There it is. So I just wanted to point out to the council that that was something that we, that we did leave in there. And. You know, we'll just talk about it more, more as we see what the big picture is with the, on the sales tax and the revenue side of things. You know, hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll know more and we can discuss that. But Kyle and I talked, we're going to go ahead and leave that 2% merit increase in this year. But knowing that that's something we can talk about later. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
So the tentative budget would be approved with that in there with the understanding that those increases would be frozen until a final budget was approved in, in August. So we would hold off on anything until the final budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And then this last section is just a review of, of everything we've talked about over the budget discussions. So, so these are the things, the main points that are included in this budget changes. So the 2% increase is in there and the benefits increase. The, the three positions that we've talked about, the public works inspector, on the public works position. And then the city planner position. Youth court, public safety, that includes animal control and the police contract. Recreation, the decrease in, in the transfer. To capital projects and then new capital projects and, and increase in water purchase. One of the things then in a previous discussion that the council had said is they may want to, that you may want to talk some more about these. Three new positions. And is that something you would want to discuss now? Or is everyone good with moving forward with, with those positions?
Can you explain the city planner position a little bit so I get an idea where that's at? Troy is doing, is he doing the city planner part of things right now or is that community development or are they different?
Yeah, no, it would be another planner position that would help relieve Boyd and Troy. A lot of that is anticipating the continued growth in the city with West Davis corridor under construction. And anticipating that as, as soon as that connection is made, more growth is likely to happen. So, so it is a, it's a second planner position. And right, right now Boyd and Troy are both overloaded with planner responsibilities. And it would be nice to take some pressure off of them and to. Allow us to get more done. I know there's been a lot of focus in the last few months on this land use code revision. And, and really diving into that and, and meeting weekly and, and then having assignments throughout the week. For just that code revision. But then there's, you know, all the planning commission items. So this position, we, we would have one city planner and the other one would be another planner position. But only, only one of them would be the city planner. Both would fall in the community development department under Boyd. And we would just be able to kind of relieve some pressure that just continues to build in that department.
So the numbers that you have there, 97,000. I remember a conversation a while back, maybe it was even last year about Troy going full-time. Does that, take that into account? Are we, are we hiring a full-time position in addition or is Troy going full-time or hiring a part-time?
Well, right now Troy is about three-quarter time. Maybe a little bit more than that. I think he's 30.
34.
34 hours. So just over three-quarter time. And so this, this is anticipating another full-time position. Troy, Troy's position would, wouldn't be going full-time. He would still be at 34 hours. would, wouldn't be going full time. He would still be at 34 hours. Um, and conversations we've had in the past, he's not too interested in going full time. Um, I think we did budget that position to go full time in the past so that the, at some point, if we need it to, we, we can. So, yeah, I mean, that's to answer your question, this is a, another full time, this is a full time position. Troy currently is not working full time hours.
And this, this position would be the head city planner.
Yeah. But we.
Troy would fall, Troy would fall under him.
Exactly. That's, that's our vision of it. Um, that the full time position would be the city planner. Um, yeah.
Those of you on the, on the North Davis Fire District Board, I was talking to Chief Bee Craft the other day and, or I was over there and I heard mentioned that they were looking for some type of a planner position. Does that ring a bell?
Not that I know of.
Yep, me either. Haven't heard of a word of it.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, a lot of good you guys are. Somebody said something, somebody said something about it.
Andy, I promise.
No, I was there, Erin's doing her Miss West Point service project and was over there. And so I was just visiting and I heard that somewhere. I don't know if it was Misty that said it or John or the chief. I don't know. I just heard it in the background. So take it for what it's worth.
No worries. But on this, uh, on these positions and the planner specifically Kyle, I, I think with the West Davis corridor coming on and that timeframe is set regardless of what the economy does going forward, um, that, that there's going to be a lot of movement and it would be really nice if we're ahead of it, not behind it. So if we wait till it's all here, then we're just going to be really behind, we'll miss things. And so I'm, I'm in favor of really getting on top of it now and the cost of the wages will protect our residents really. And I, I use that word not to save, but to protect them from things that might not go the way that we'd like them to. So I'm, I'm in favor of proceeding with that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, that, that is a, a good point, something that we've just been thinking about that we don't want to be behind the curve trying to get a, a planner on board, um, when it's crunch time and we're even further behind with things. But, um, but we also, um, it, it seems like often you, with, with planners, they kind of have their own, um, their own way of thinking and doing things and kind of what they've learned in school. And, um, I think it'd be nice to have somebody in place now to kind of understand the council's vision. Um, and and what we're trying to accomplish in the city so that when more happens and more development occurs that they've already caught on to the vision. They understand what direction we're going rather than coming in saying, well, this is what I think we should do as a planner. Um, we just, we want it to be more of a smooth transition, I guess. So.
It'd be nice.
My comments weren't uh, in any way to be construed that I was against that position. I just wanted to see where it fit and how Troy's future fit in with that.
Yep.
If we could get somebody with some experience commercially, because that's some one thing that we've re- you know, wanted to have more of a vision of our, what our commercial development and how it should play out. Um, if we could look for that in a candidate, I think that would be beneficial.
Yep, that's a good point.
So Ryan, Ryan, do you have anything else to add on this?
No, that's it. That's the end. So this will be up for adoption in, in the regular meeting as well as the CDRA portion will be up for adoption in that meeting.
The, uh, does any of the council, uh, have any questions or comments on the tentative budget that, uh, Ryan or Kyle could, could answer at this point?
I'm good with it.
I just, I just wanted to ask for my own clarification. The last page that you were on, Ryan, it talked about the, um, is the increased amounts, correct?
Yeah.
And it says for public safety. Is that, is that, um, the amount that we talked about last year with the sheriff's department or is that a new amount for this coming year?
So we budgeted, um, I believe it was 13,000 for animal control. That contract went up by 13,000. Um, so that's in there and then we budgeted a 5% increase for the police contract. So that's 12,000. Um, we haven't, um, talked with them or or have a new contract with them yet. So we just budgeted a 5% increase for this year.
Okay, that's an impression that I was under. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else?
So I'll ask one clarifying question too with regards to the transfer because that's a negative in red. That just means it's that, is it that much of a decrease from last year?
Yeah, that's the decreased amount. Yep. So it's still, I, I don't, I don't have the actual number in front of me, but it's lowered by that amount due to what we're budgeting less, um, for revenues as a result of the coronavirus.
If you have the, I think you'll have the actual increase at the next meeting because you'll have it all penciled out. You know, right now you're not sure what we are agreeing to. So it's hard to get to that number, but that'll be a, a good number to have at that point.
Yeah. So the, so then the actual number of the transfer, um, is 588,000 is what we're budgeting in that. And that's this number 594,000. That's how much less it is than than what we budgeted the year before.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That does. I, I think, uh, a, a perspective piece here where Andy, you mentioned, you know, the fire district, they said something about a planner. I really, me and Eric don't know anything about that. Not sure where that's coming from, but what we can tell you is that, and this is probably important to know with regards to our city's budget is at the fire district, the board has asked that we have a conservative budget and, and it is difficult to fit any pay increases in that conservative budget. And I think that's part of the reason we paused on the 2% increase here for staff is that with the economy in front of us the way that it is, uh, wondering what's really ahead. And that's, that's also why I agree. It'd be nice to weigh a little bit so that we could implement some of these things once we know where things are. But I think generally the feel around the county and Eric's the one that knows more than I do are that things should be pretty conservative in that regard. And I, I like where we're at budget wise so far.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else before we move on? Okay, we'll, uh, move on to the next item and that's the discussion regarding the proposed West Point Arts Council. And I'll turn the time over to Kyle to lead us in that discussion.
Hey. Let me. All right. Can you see this PowerPoint slide?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so if you remember, um, at our council, um, visioning session, um, this, uh, sorry, my screen's looking really funny. Okay. Um, this idea of the West Point Arts Council was brought up by, um, by Jerry. Um, he had talked to Randy Berice, uh, during some of his campaigning, um, period, and she had pitched this idea to him. And, uh, so he brought it up, um, at that meeting in January, um, the council was open to the discussion, but they directed, um, me to contact, uh, Randy and ask her, uh, to submit a proposal or give us more information about what she would like to, um, see, um, with the arts councils. So, so that the city council had a, a better idea of, of what they were considering. So that's what this presentation is. Um, this was a PowerPoint that was submitted to me by Randy and and Brittany. And, um, they are both on the, um, on the, uh, meeting, it looks like as attendees. Um, so if, if you have further questions for them, um, we can unmute them and and allow them to, uh, comment. And so I'm just going to go through their presentation here, um, on their behalf and and kind of give you some information, um, of what they are hoping to accomplish with this arts council. Um, does that look blank to you? Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. So, um, so of course this is their objective to initiate an arts council in West Point City that will provide artistic outlets. And opportunities that will help residents and and the city thrive. Um, they have listed, uh, things that are currently, um, available in the schools. Um, and they've, in both of, both in the schools and with what they want to accomplish, they are, um, have separated them in performing arts and and visual arts. And so some of the performing arts that, that, that kids are, have available to them are orchestra, band, musical theater, drama, choir, general music classes. Um, in fact, Randy's been the music teacher, um, at West Point Elementary School, um, last year and maybe the year before. Um, so she has, uh, some experience. She also teaches piano and other musical, um, instruments or has in the past. So, uh, she has some experience with, um, with the arts, performing arts, um, and maybe visual arts. I, I'm not sure. Um, but anyway, some other visual arts that are available currently are painting, drawing, ceramics, art club, art prep classes. Um, and then through private businesses, you've got, um, some of, some of these. And there's probably other, um, private music lessons as she mentions here that she didn't list. And these are some that she knows about. We've had the singer's company, um, perform at the Christmas, um, city hall lighting ceremony in the past. Um, and then of course our, our marching band for the parade. Um, so they say the available arts programs have been enriching the lives of our city's residents. However, West Point City does not provide many artistic outlet, outlets for its adult citizens. Most of the programs available to our children and youth are provided by the school district, which was, has limited resources, age demographics and scope. Private lessons can be costly, which prevents some citizens from participating. So with the arts council, um, visual arts wise, these are some of the ideas that they have, have come up with. Um, a pumpkin walk festival. I think Syracuse does something like that. Um, sidewalk chalk festival, birdhouse competition. Um, it could be displayed, art classes, um, art gallery, quilting or sewing. Um, where they could display these at the Fourth of July celebration, paint parties, a parade, float contest. Um, for the performing arts. Some ideas are musical theater, choirs, symphony orchestra performances at the Fourth of July. Uh, summer camps, dance classes, storytelling festival, film festival. And so these, I think their ideas that these could be for, um, for youth and children or and or adults, um, where right now the, the youth and children get some exposure to it in, in the school. Um, many of these activities can be done at little to no cost. Some would require community space where they could have classes or groups to, to gather or rehearse. Um, the West Point Arts, Arts Council would raise money through sponsors or grants. Um, and other donations is, as needed to help fund the program. They also acknowledge that, um, that they would need to establish themselves as a 501(c)(3) and and establish a board of directors. Um, but of course they want the council's approval, um, with this. So, um, if, if this is something that the council would like to see happen or, um, or support, then they would reach out to the community, um, through a survey to see what interest level there is and, and research more opportunities, recruit volunteers that could and help them with, with the ideas that they have and and come up with more ideas. So, um, they're just asking for the city's support and, um, they want to see the, the community, the art community grow and um, I feel that increased participation in the arts will uplift, inspire and unite the citizens of West Point. So, um, that is the information that they provided. And like I mentioned, they're on, on the call. So if you have questions for them, um, they would be available to answer them. But um, with, with that, um, I guess what, what are your thoughts on on an arts council and and the potential or possibility of, of forming a West Point Arts Council?
Can I chime in? Is that all right there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so first of all, I really like the possibility. I, I would be in favor of pursuing this. And I think that a community is somewhat defined by its arts and the ability to have those talents generally. Um, that doesn't always mean we have the luxury, so to speak, of accomplishing that, but, but it's a real benefit to the community. I do have a question, um, because I can't tell from this if this is intended to be part of the city as in West Point City. Or if it's meant to be a separate entity because it does talk about being a 501(c)(3) organization, which would lend me to believe that it's a separate organization with its own board, its own funding and would just then partner and or coordinate with the city for maybe some facilities and opportunities. Um, anybody, you know, if there's a clarification on that?
No, you want to answer that?
I, I don't have an answer. Randy, um, would you like to type in there?
Yeah, I honestly just looked up some other arts councils online. So I didn't know exactly what was needed. I, if we had to be a 401, I didn't know how we needed to set that up. Um, that's partly why I'm coming to you, to know how that works, if we would be just connected to the city. So we don't need to set ourselves up as a nonprofit. Um, we would like to be connected with the city though, kind of like the youth council, so that we can do this together.
Based on that, then we, you wouldn't need to be a 501(c)(3) entity. You, you would just be part of the city.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, but that's part of what we would need to investigate is the right way to do the structure, maybe look at some other cities, how they structured it, what's, how are they funded? How's it going? Um, I, I think it would be well to see how some of these are going around, uh, in, in the area. By the way, Brittany, I see that you're on here too. Well done.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for having us and considering it.
Uh, any of the other council have any questions or comments on, in regards to the?
I'm excited for, I'm excited for the opportunity to see what this can bring to the city and and to our community. Uh, because we all need rallying points and this could be a real rallying point for some people that, uh, can't find a rallying point anywhere else. So I think it can bring people together and it can be a great addition to all of our activities or July 4th and different things to help bring that even further, uh, along and, and more functional. So I'm, I'm excited for it and I appreciate the time that they've spent in putting this, uh, together thus far and hope that we can go ahead and work on it and see where it goes.
I know with, uh, Syracuse, um, my kids have participated in some of their theater activities and you know, I think if we wanted to look at partnering, maybe possibly, because I know some of the, like the Syracuse orchestra has West Point people in it, you know, we could do something, you know, partner with them or have them uh, help us adopt our program. I think I read in the minutes or something that it's not a very robust or it's floundering, but I don't see that the case. I've talked to Tara Was Bruce, then, uh, it's a new name now. But anyway, she's over the, their arts there and Dave Monz, the councilman. Was Bruce, then uh it's a new name now. But anyway, she's over the their arts there and Dave Monz, the councilman. But it seems like a pretty well-run program, so I think we could probably glean onto them any information we may need to help us start and then maybe partner on some different things with them.
Anybody else have any comments?
I would echo some of the same sentiment that I would be excited by some of the potential of bringing um different age groups together, so it's not just a kids group or an adults group. But I mean, one of the things just post that they mentioned on there was, you know, sewing or quilting and having those available to display, and that's something they think that's passed down. But not everybody has that extended family, maybe, right, in West Point? So that would be something that all of those things, I think, approached with the right thought and consideration. You know, we don't tackle everything at once, but gauge what the interest is. And I think it would be really exciting. And that's one thing that I felt campaigning was people don't want us find a girl because they don't want to lose that community, but this would bring some community to to what we already have here. It would enhance it. So that's what I would think.
So is everybody okay if we um move forward with this kind of maybe having? You know, we have this information they provided, but maybe have uh staff uh look look at some of neighboring communities and reach out to them, get their maybe advice and feedback on what's worked, what's not worked, and then and come back to the council with some some recommendations?
I think that we I think I can. I think that would be good. Uh just interested in knowing going forward uh what responsibility financially or manpower-wise the city might uh be asked to be involved with. But I like the idea. I think arts is a great thing. And I think it'd be great to help bring our community even closer than we are.
One other comment, if I could, that I'd be interested to see how the other cities are structured with regards to youth, adult and seniors. Um we typically have looked at city resources as trying to influence our youth and and help our seniors, but the adults have a lot of their own entertainment systems and might not need city involvement quite as much, although it could be very appropriate here. But but in the investigation side, I'd be interested to see how much those other cities are putting in each of those focus areas, so that we kind of realize that they might be three different areas.
I I just I think that uh and I know, Mayor, you mentioned the staff, but I think that that with the two individuals that have brought this forward to us, um they may be a better link to go to the other communities and and actually talk to the arts councils over there and then bring back information to the staff.
I'd be willing to help participate in any way to help Randy or whatever needs to happen on that.
So I think maybe if that's the case, we probably, you know, better get the a meeting together and just kind of, all right, you're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. So I do think there are some things that are more appropriate for them to research uh and reach out to the neighboring communities. And there are some things that would be probably better for us to have a look at and 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 look at the resources we have with some of the relationships we have with other cities that we can kind of hey, this has worked great, you know, go down this route. Or hey, we started like this and it didn't really work out and we went down this road. So I think uh we just need to get together and maybe separate what separate those responsibilities and those uh tasks out as we move forward and look at it a little little closer. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Sorry, I had to take a spoonful of my soup.
Is it good?
It's really good.
Good. All right, we'd like to welcome everybody out to our general session of our city council meeting. Uh today is June second, two thousand twenty, and we are meeting uh via virtually via Zoom. And in attendance tonight from our council is Annette Judd, Gary Peterson, Andy Dawson, Jerry Chatterton and Kent Henderson. And um I'd like to also welcome the city staff that uh is with us today and those that made this meeting possible. Special thanks. We also have three attendees at our meeting right now. And uh I'd like to welcome the three of you that are in on our meeting. Um we'll go ahead and and have uh ask Gary if he'd say the prayer, if you'd go ahead and do that. Uh and then we'll go on through the agenda. Gary?
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful that we can gather in this uh meeting. We're grateful for the technology that allows us to be able to move forward in in this uh time. We're thankful also for our residents in the fine city that we live in and for the protections that we've received uh to be healthy and well, and ask that I would continue to watch over our residents and bless us to be uh protected and be able to make wise decisions with regards to the health and welfare of our residents. We ask uh protection on our youth and our uh first responders to that they can uh be trained and and well-prepared for the things that come and that they will be a blessing to us and that that they'll be protected. We're ask for thy spirit to be with us this evening and do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Uh item three from our on our agenda, and and if you haven't looked at the agenda already, it's pretty small, so um hope you didn't pack a lunch. Um but we'll go to item number three, and that's communication and disclosure from the city council. And myself, we'll start with Gary. Do you have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Uh Kent, do you have anything?
Uh no, Mayor.
Uh Annette?
Yep, um me and Andy, I think, uh Utopia today. Um but I wanted to, I mean, I know that's personal for me, but for the city, it's a it's a good thing. And um I I wanted to share a little bit of information so that all of our residents have the um information available to them that you can pay your um service with Utopia upfront, and it's called the prepaid purchase agreement. And it's twenty seven hundred dollars, and it would be equal to about seven and a half years of your thirty dollar a month payment. Or they can just choose to do the thirty dollars a month, but that's kind of forever. So um just good information for people to have, and if you can do it that way, which we're never moving, so we'll just pay it upfront. And um that's what I want the residents to know. You're never moving, so just pay it upfront if you can. And uh hit yourselves a break and we'll get as many who signed up as we can. I'm excited about it.
Thanks, Annette. Jerry, do you have anything?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Uh Andy?
Uh nothing, but we do have Utopia. It started today, so they they were in my house, run the fiber. Pretty interesting to see how it all works. And I've yet to plug in on it into it yet, because he just finished, just as I was getting on the the Zoom meeting. So I'm still on CenturyLink for the next ten or fifteen minutes.
Nice.
Mayor, can I correct myself? It's twenty seven fifty, if you want to pay that upfront, I know.
Extra fifty dollars. Now it's seven years and one month.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, thanks, Annette. I didn't know, actually, I didn't know that was even an option. So out of all the conversations that I've had, that's a new one. So thanks for sharing that. Uh did I miss anybody? I think I hit everybody. Um thank you for chiming in. I don't uh I don't necessarily have anything tonight. I do have a Bossetts Integrated Board Meeting tomorrow night. We had fire district meeting, as Gary mentioned, uh last week. And uh just, you know, it's kind of the same same stuff that we've talked about. Everybody's just kind of wondering on revenue. Uh it's budget time of year. Everybody's passing the tentative budget. And a little little bit more guesswork going on that uh than than usual. And uh maybe just being a little more conservative and holding a little bit more tighter to to some good budget principles uh is 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 probably the the theme with everybody. And then, you know, like Kyle might mention this too, but him and I have have continued to uh go on to the meetings with the Health Department every Monday afternoon at four P M. to get an update. West Point, I think, continues to still, at least, I think, last time we met, we maybe had four cases. I think now we have five five cases total in West Point. And uh so we haven't really seen any significant changes there. One thing that was interesting for last week, last week, we had, there were there were forty four. But this isn't the the it's so it'd be two weeks ago. There were forty four new cases in Davis County and and thirty five of those cases came from Syracuse and uh Layton combined. So a little bit closer to home with with some of the increases that we've seen, but so far, West Point, cross your fingers and knock on wood, is holding pretty good. So um with that, I'll turn the time over to staff on item number four. Kyle, if you have anything tonight?
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. Um they've kind of been mentioned, but I'll sure. Um I I was out of town when I sent the numbers for the Utopia, but um let's see. You see that? And so this is a spreadsheet that I've just been tracking the increase um connections in the city. And um the total as of last Friday, like I sent you, was two hundred and seventy one. So we have a little over nine hundred left. Um I kind of made some notes on the dates of when things opened. So middle of May was when the whole east side of town opened. Um so we we've only had a couple of weeks uh with that. But the next week, we had ninety nine new connections and then last week, forty five new connections. So interesting just to kind of see how that trends um over the coming weeks and and months um as we get closer to uh hitting our goal for twelve hundred. And I was talking to the project manager at Utopia today, and um they are hoping to open portions of the west side um by the end of July. They were planning on just opening the whole west side uh in August, but they're still waiting on some Bureau of Reclamation permits to cross the canals at eight hundred, thirteen hundred and eighteen hundred. So uh they sent me a map yesterday showing, uh maybe it was this morning, showing me that there are a few areas on the west side that will be delayed because of those permits. Um but everyone else should be able to um to start signing up at the end of July, so.
So Kyle, is that actual connected into the house or is that people who have signed up?
These are completed connections.
Okay, the guy was saying when he was installing mine that when that west side opens up, he says there's already a ton of people have already committed to having it into their homes and they're just waiting on the connection to be done, so.
Yeah, so they have that option on their website that you can sign up or express your interest, and then they'll contact you once it's available. Uh maybe some of you did that, but um yeah, I think that that's what we've been hearing, too. There's just been a lot of interest all over. And and hopefully, we see more numbers like we've seen the last two weeks um rather than the two weeks prior to that. But um but the signups are coming and it's it's looking good, I think, considering um how it's been almost two months that we've started and we have um almost three hundred connections already. I think that's pretty good. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I'll include that in my um updates to the council. Um I just was out of town and wasn't able to include it uh last week, so I wanted to share that with you.
Can I just ask a question, Kyle? While you're talking about Utopia, uh I got the message today that Landmark had hit another water line down by West Point Elementary, and I had my daughter that lives just north of the city building called me just before this meeting and said that her water was really brown. Is that part of that system, do you know? And should they flush it or we uh in boil order? What are where we at?
There's no boil order uh needed. The water is discolored in many parts of the city as a result of this waterline break. Um with the pressure changes, Paul said that um it's just broken loose the mineral deposits that were on the pipes. And it's safe to drink. It's it's discolored, so you might, people just might not want to. But um there's nothing harmful about it. Those mineral deposits were inside the pipe and water was running past them before. Um uh the water is back on now and flowing through at normal pressures. And people probably should flush. We we did post right before city council meeting started, a Facebook post um recommending that people flush from their outside taps and maybe filling their bathtubs and and draining it just to help flush their own system. But it might take twenty four hours for the discoloration to completely disappear. But um we've been trying to communicate that on Facebook. We we've got a lot of calls between five and five thirty um about the discolored water, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
It was all related to that that break, and um I think I sent you all the picture. But um maybe for those attendees that are viewing, here's a an aerial image of that pothole. And when Boyd sent that to me, I was surprised at how almost perfectly rounded it is. Um but anyway, it's a big, it's a big hole, and right in the middle, once they got it all drained out, it was probably eight feet deep. And you can see the boring missile right here. It punched right into the right into the joint um where those pipes connect. And uh anyway, but they've got it repaired now. Um I think they were a little off on their line. These were two potholes and there was another pothole over here. But it was kind of veering off. Um and anyway, I'm not sure
so
the depth and things like that.
I think if you look, if you look right about twelve o'clock where those people are standing, that's where the that's um where they thought it was, right above them.
Yeah, there are um there are two blue stake marks on the shoulder, and we had two lines. Um they said that they potholed and verified that there were lines there. Um but when I left, they were going to find out, they were gonna vacuum out and see what they actually found. And they said one of them was a blue line and one looked like a steel line. But obviously, one of them was mistaken. Um we have a meter or a valve box in the road about at this location uh further uh down to the east. And this this is orient oriented with the the south up. Um but closer to the elementary school and the blue stakes. And and even Paul said if I had a blue stake, that I would have put the lines where they are based on the valve and where the next valve boxes are. But um but for some reason, this water line came out into the road and nobody knew that it veered out there. Um when you get back by the box, it's closer to where um the secondary water line, it comes across the road and connects, and then the valve box is back a little bit more on the outside of the secondary. So they think that um when the water line was laid, they they came across the secondary water line so that they could get a straight shot down the road without interfering with some of those. Um anyway, so it was, I guess there's a lot of factors that lined up to have it be missed mismarked on the blue stakes. But um anyway, they have water turned back on, they're backfilling it. And they'll do the saw cuts and they'll have to patch all the way across the road. Um UDOT's gonna require a full patch from curb to curb, so.
Well, if they if that would have been even on the shoulder at the depth they're at, they would have hit it anyway, correct?
It's, yeah, it's it's possible. Um the the only thing is that they would have potholed and they would have seen where it was at, and they would have
Oh, I see.
They would have known the depth of of the pipe. Um so I don't know, there's there's probably s- some fault on on multiple parties, but you know, it's gonna come back to the blue stakes, probably, so. Anyway, little
Anything else you have, Kyle?
What um just one other, one other screen share um with the uh Health Department updates. Uh this was, this was the one of the slides that they shared that the mayor kind of referenced. But I shared this with you a couple of weeks ago, and we were probably But I shared this with you a couple of weeks ago and we were probably probably looking at this one that says thirty-three, where it was looking pretty stable in the last two weeks. These are the numbers that they've, they've seen. So with easing out of the red into orange and yellow, we are definitely seeing more cases in the county. And that does bring some concerns to the Health Director. And so we'll, we'll just see. He said that if, if it was up to him, he would like to see, he'd like to see a stay in yellow through the month of June, but he doesn't think that will happen based on economic reasons from the state. So.
They said today it's going to be a cautious green now.
Yeah, I saw that article. The mayor just sent it to me a little bit ago. But yeah, so it sounds like the phase guidelines, they've made some modifications to that. They've added a, a new green. It's not the same green that we were kind of looking at. So a whole nother set of guidelines that we need to become familiar with. So, so we know what, what is allowed and what's not. But it also said that the governor hasn't made an official announcement or order on that, which I suspect he'll do later this week. But anyway, just wanted to show, share that slide with you. And like the mayor said, West Point is looking pretty, pretty good. We have no active cases right now, in total of five since it started. So that's all I have. You're muted, Mayor. You're, you're muted again, Mayor.
Twice. That's, that's, I've, I've got my allotment of doing that done. So. All right, item five is citizen comment. If there's anybody here that's on the meeting with us that would like to comment. If you'd please join the meeting by using raise your hand icon if on a computer or dial star nine to indicate you'd like to make a comment. When it's your turn, the meeting host will unmute you. Clearly, please clearly state your name and address, keeping your comments to about two and a half minutes. So we'll open it up to any public comment. I know we do have, I looked here just a second ago, we have five attendees. And so we'll just give them a second if they'd like to make any comments. I don't believe, we haven't had any comments that's come in prior to the meeting, have we, Casey?
No.
Do you see anybody raising their hand?
We do have a public hearing too.
Oh, yeah. And yeah, we do have a public hearing on the tentative budget. So those that are on that want to speak about the tentative budget, you'll have that time.
I, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, thanks, Casey. We'll move on to item number six then. That's consideration of the approval of the minutes from the May fifth, two thousand twenty meeting.
I just wanted to know or ask, I did make, from what I remember, I made a little comment on the beginning part and I don't see that one in there.
On the council comments?
Yeah, from the last meeting.
These are from the May fifth ones? So it's two meetings ago?
Okay, the last meeting. Gotcha. So.
Because you did talk about the planning.
All the Tuesdays.
I know.
Sorry.
Just bring it up that I'm behind.
That's not my intent. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Wait a minute, did Gary make the motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Andy seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Item seven is consideration of the approval of the resolutions, or Resolution six-two, two thousand twenty A, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one tentative budget for West Point City and all related agencies. Ryan, do you have anything that you want to present prior to the public hearing? You're playing me and you're muting yourself.
There we go. I don't have anything in addition to what we talked about in the work session. But I can go over anything if anyone has any questions.
So I think we do have the same, basically the same attendees that we had during the, during the administrative session. But I do want to let everybody know that the budget, tentative budget is available online. So if anybody wants to dive into that or has any questions, you need a public that, that they'll be able to do that and then by going online and then finding that. So. So with that, we'll go ahead and have the public hearing. If there's anybody that's attending with us tonight, if they'd like to make comment on the tentative budget, now would be the time to do so. Once again, using the raise your hand icon, if you're on a computer or star nine, if you're joining us via telephone. And if you use the, that would alert the host and then we'll unmute you, state your name and address and leave me your comments. Anybody? Any takers? Just look here at my attendee list. We have, we have five attendees now. Anybody? Do you see anybody, Casey?
Yeah.
Give it just a second more. Seeing that we don't have any, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Andy and a second by Annette. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I will go ahead now and, and let the council talk if there's any other questions that you have of staff regarding the tentative budget. Keep in mind that once this is passed, this will be the working budget that we'll have until the final budget's passed in likely August. And, and so if you do have any questions, the council between now and August or whatever, you're always open and welcome to contact staff to get those questions answered. Anybody have any comments or questions on the tentative budget before we take action on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass, to approve, entertain a motion for Resolution six-two, two thousand twenty-eight.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R oh-six-oh-two, two thousand twenty A, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one tentative budget.
I'll second up.
There was a motion by Jerry and a second by Kent.
The resolution number that he mentioned was the, in the C D R A meeting. It's the same number, but about the R.
I'm sorry. Okay, I amend my motion.
That was a prior motion.
I amend my second R.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we'll go ahead and, I don't need this motion to close the general session. And then just, just for a minute after, we'll have the, the C D R A meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the general session.
So moved.
Okay.
Sounds like Gary and Annette seconded. So thank you. We're now adjourned. We'll go ahead and call the C D R A meeting to order. We're going to forego the prayer. Do we have any communications from the board members? Annette, do you know what the C D R A meeting is?
I agree. I had a little chat with my husband about that earlier, about what it involves. And I'm under the impression that I'm on the board.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a C D R A that we, we created. And because we have, we created that and it's regarding the, the property that's up by Smith's. And so once, once a year, we do have to adopt a tentative budget. This is just a formality that we do once a year. So. Communications from staff tonight.
Just one thing that I just thought about, we, we need to select a new vice chair for this board. Jeff Turner was the vice chair previously. So I don't know if you.
Does anybody want to make a motion to, to select a new vice chair right now?
I'll make a motion that we have Annette Judd do this as the new vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Jerry to have Annette Judd be the vice chair of the C D R A. All in favor?
Hi.
Annette, are you okay with doing that?
Yes.
I should have asked you that after you voted, because I would say you opposed and you need to oppose it. It's a, it's a pretty time consuming process, I think. Maybe, maybe even under a minute. So.
Okay. So I was under the impression Jeff was the chairman, not the vice chairman. Is that not the case?
He was vice, I think Eric's.
He was vice.
He was vice. There were a couple of meetings that the mayor missed, so he chaired the meeting, but he was.
I went there. I went.
Mayor is always missing those meetings. Have to bring that up again, don't you, Kyle? All right. So consideration of approval of resolutions R six, zero-two, two thousand twenty-eight, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one tentative budget for the C D R A of West Point City. Ryan, you want to touch briefly on, we don't have anything, right?
So, yeah, I mean, the only change from the budget that we did last, I mean, the only expense we have is the debt obligation. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And the only change is the, you know, as we pay more, the interest becomes less and the debt expense becomes more. So that's the only change in the budget. We still budget a hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. And, and as that goes up, we'll just have extra money in this account that at the end, we'll be able to pay back some of the other things, including the city's general fund that for the first three years of its existence, we borrowed from the general fund to pay the debt obligation because we hadn't received the increment yet. So that's, that's kind of briefly what's going on. It's, it's a very similar budget to, to last year. I can answer any questions.
Any questions at all for Ryan? And, and Annette, seeing, seeing that you are the vice chair of the C D R A, if you want to get more in the weeds on what this is and what we did, it's kind of an interesting process that we went through. We actually followed Kaysville Cities. They, they've just recently done a Smith's, you know, a couple of years before we did and went through this process. And, and so we kind of followed their model and they helped us work our way through it. But you're welcome to, to talk to Ryan or Kyle to get more familiar with this as we move forward. So. If, if we don't have any comments, we do have to open it up for a public hearing tonight. So if there's anybody that's on with us, we're now down to four attendees. So somebody got bored and dropped off. You make a comment by raising your hand, use the raise your hand icon on your computer, the dial star nine if you're on the telephone, and indicate that you'd like to make a comment and we'll unmute you, state your name and address. That whole fun stuff.
I think that was our former council member that just bailed on us.
Yes, he did. And he texted me, he texted me that he was going to leave us. I think because he's not, I think he probably chimed in because he was the vice chair.
I thought he was still the vice.
He replaced him.
He wanted to run him out.
He was like the dirty bugger.
He just got offended.
Some people just can't let go.
I know. That was, that was always something he did really well at. All right. Now, now I lost my train of thought. So any, any public hearing? We don't have anybody wanting to raise their hand, right? Okay.
I do not see any comments.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Gary, second by who's that? Kent? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Action on the particular, on this resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution number R oh-six-oh-two, two thousand twenty A, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one tentative budget for the C D R A of West Point City.
Second.
We have a motion by Andy in a bunch of seconds. I don't know who was there first.
Give it to her now.
Annette, you've got it. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Well, we've reached the end of our, our meeting. I just want to express my appreciation to all of you for coming in, spending some time to take care of the city business. We knew it was a little bit lighter of an agenda, but there's also some time, time sensitive items on our agenda that we couldn't just not have a meeting because of the budget and the timeline of that. So we appreciate that. Just one item of note, and, and Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I do believe the next meeting, which will be two weeks from today, that we are going to try to do an in-person meeting at the city hall. So we're going to, we're going to make arrangements to have that be separated and have that once again, meeting at city hall. So if something changes with, with, with that, we'll let you know, but just plan on an in-person meeting for the next meeting. But with, with that being said, wish all of you well and your families and, and hope, hope everybody's doing good. And can't wait to, once again, meet together and, and be able to look at each other six feet apart. So.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Andy and a second by, is it Jerry?
The other way around.
Oh, motion by Jerry, second by Andy. I have some background noise here that's bothering me. Think it's. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, you guys have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks.